Everybody, Mark, you're still red. Ed, you're still red. Yeah, okay. Okay, good. Great. Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting. If you would please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the high of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm calling the meeting to order, and I'm opening up for public comment. And I have one. Jason, could you take over as chair to recognize me?
Yes. Recognize Kathy for public comment.
Thank you. Okay. My name is Kathleen Castrenellis. I reside at 12 Hillview Drive. I am speaking tonight as a resident of Groveland and not as a member of the Board of Selectmen or Select Board, excuse me. Additionally, I state tonight, the views that I state are my own and are not representative of any other organization, board, or committee. So, as many of you know, I'm a teacher at the Whittier Vocational High School, a job which I love. But what some people may not know is I'm a career changer. In my prior career path, I was heavily involved in the electric utility industry and specifically in pricing and cost allocation studies. So, when I read about in the newspaper and other documents the dismay of the member towns at Whittier in the allocation of capital costs that is currently outlined in the regional agreement, I thought, I need to take a look at that. I'm used to cost allocation studies. I'm interested in this as a person, as a resident. And I did look at it. And I studied it, and I thought about it. And then I thought about things that I think maybe others are not thinking about. The fact that, right now, Whittier does use the two-step allocation method, which encompasses the minimum required contribution, which reflects more the population and economy of the town than people realize. So that towns are paying more in the minimum contribution than the percent of students they send to Whittier. I just want to point out some facts so that people understand before just jumping into a petition and ask the state to go change it. Make sure. You take a look at some of these things. On behalf of the town of Groveland and myself as a resident, before you decide that the towns leading the charge have it right, make sure it's right for Groveland. Okay? Take a look at our percentages. Take a look at what might change. Some towns are very close to paying the same percentage as the students that they send currently. Some towns are not. It is an old agreement. But I'm a big believer in collaboration as a resident, and I don't like to see things handed over to the state to do because one town won't cooperate with the others. I believe in continuing to work at things, as we do with the Penticut Agreement. We find things we can agree upon, we change those. Things we don't agree upon yet, we put off to the side until we can find a way that will work. And that's just my personal statement as a resident, as a person with a lot of background in cost allocation studies, that there's more to it than just one statistic. So please ask the members of the Select Board to pay attention to what you're signing or agreeing to. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. And I will be relinquishing the chair. Back to you.
Ah, thanks. Appreciate that. Okay, and we'll go back to our agenda. So first, on our agenda, we did have a presentation from our neighbor's table, but that has been canceled. And before I do that, I was supposed to allow Mike Dempsey to do a department comment update, which I almost forgot about, but I didn't. Yes, thank you.
Thanks. Mike Dempsey, member of the Community Preservation Committee. So I just wanted to announce that the Community Preservation Committee will hold a public hearing this Thursday, October 17th, at 6:30 PM here in this very room. And the purpose of the hearing is to learn about the needs, possibilities, resources, and preferences for community preservation and also hear comments and questions on this year's request for proposals with the submission guidelines for community preservation projects. As you know, CPA can be used for open space, recreation, community housing, and historic preservation. So we are inviting anyone to come and talk about projects that may fit in these four areas for a potential project to be voted on at town meeting next year in April. So if you want to take a look at the request for proposals, it's posted on the groveland.m a website for the CPC. And I hope you all, if you're interested, feel free to come on Thursday night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Can they just send in if they can't attend, or do they have to be there in person?
No, they can send.
Okay, so you can send in as well. Okay, and now we're going to go to our regular agenda. Tonight on our agenda, we have a review discussion of the Quick Auto Class II Auto License. We have a request for one-day liquor license, a request for a new liquor license application supplemental information, acceptance of a deed for parcels of land, review of a proposed letter by West Newbury Select Board to the State Delegation Regarding Whittier Technical School. Number seven is a town administrator performance evaluation is completed. We'll present it. Number eight is a townwide project list review. And then we have three appointments and resignations and approval of minutes from September, and then our usual updates. So a full agenda.
You missed number one.
That has been canceled. I'm sorry, I apologize. I was informed that our neighbor's table had something come up at the last minute, and they could not. They cannot be here tonight. So hopefully in our next meeting, if we can fit them in. Rebecca, do you think they'll be there at the next meeting? Okay. So that's what we're looking for.
Kathy?
Yes.
So question, I was about to get for a public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I wasn't sharing, so I assumed I was the only one. I, did you put your name in for a public comment, or?
So I thought I did like on, online earlier today.
Okay.
I did it a couple of different ways, not sure.
Okay, well. Okay, so you have a public comment you'd like to make? Okay, so it's okay with the board? We're gonna rewind and do that? Okay, thank you.
We were also under the impression that there was going to be adopted for the CFCE.
The what?
The CFCE class, the music and movement, the music and movement class that's taking place at Bagnell on Wednesday mornings.
Yes, I can address that. It is in our correspondence on this agenda, which means the members have just received it to review. And then if they request, it could be brought forward to a future agenda. So you wanted to make a comment?
We do.
With respect to that? Because it is in our, you can always make a, let me put this better. You can always make a public comment whether someone is, something is on our agenda or whether you want something on our agenda. Okay. But tonight, we won't be doing an agenda item on that. But you are welcome to make a public comment. You just come up, say your name and address, and make your comment. Okay?
Hi. I am Savannah Labella, resident of 316 Center Street in Groveland. Lived here for five years now. I'm a wife and mother to two daughters that currently go to Bagnell. I am voicing my concern over the Family Connections Music and Movement Program. Next to zero visibility has been given about this program to parents. It was dropped on parents in a Facebook group, if you are a part of that group, late on a Thursday night. Myself and others voiced concerns on that post, and then the post was removed. Why is a public event being held at a school during schooltime hours? No registration is required from people attending, and we as parents shouldn't have to worry about this? And since then, the school tried, as of this morning, tried to cancel Halloween events for the kids. There was a lot of, lot of online activity due to that. Since about maybe an hour ago, this has been backtracked, possibly due to the sheer volume of angry outcry from parents. We think, I think it was in retaliation because parents are saying that having a public event at the public school during school hours is a security risk. Anybody can show up. It's being broadcasted very publicly everywhere. And they're saying now that any other event is a possible security risk as well, even though it's direct parent involvement. We just want to bring light to it and hopefully get it stopped. It does start tomorrow morning, so it's pretty last minute, but we need to bring more visibility to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to comment? Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Amanda Gridley. I reside at 5 Ashcroft Terrace. My son is a kindergartner and want to express my concern to you all about the music and movement class that will be starting tomorrow and occurring every Wednesday mornings at 9:15 at Bagnell Elementary. We, as parents, were unfortunately made aware of this, as Savannah said, through social media last week. And then unfortunately, the post was deleted because they were probably worried that they were going to get some backlash about it. I have recently talked to the principal of Bagnell, Mr. Day, and his safety plans for the school or lack thereof. The participants of the program will be entering through the small gym doors on the side of the building. He plans to have himself and a couple other administrators let people in and then monitor the two doors that lead to the hallway of the school. One of the hallway doors will be used for bathroom, which, with, for bathroom runs, which he plans to use a desk to corral people to the bathroom so they cannot deviate into the hallways. Another desk to block the other side of the gym doors that lead to the other side of the hallway. My question to him was, was he willing to use his body in the event of an attacker? His answer was no. Of course, himself and the administration are not trained to do so, like other schools are not, which is exactly why the school needs to be remained locked down. I don't understand how we need to be vetted at the door to pick up our own children, but anybody from the public can simply walk through the side door. We need to be queried to be a mystery reader in our child's class, but we have no say who walks through the door, who jeopardizes the safety of the children and the teachers. I know many of you are thinking, well, we have school events all the time, numerous parents and caregivers and other individuals that are not connected to our district and to our school. My answer to that is simple. These are school events. They're isolated events. School events which, most of the time, parents or caregivers are accompanying their child, and if not, they are backstage with other teachers or parents looking after them. Why jeopardize the safety of our children and staff for an event that could easily be moved to the town hall, to the library, or even V.C. Park? If they're so adamant to have it at the school, why not after school or on a weekend? At minimum, I'm hoping, or at least requesting, some sort of police detail if they can't move it out of the school. It's one hour a week, every Wednesday. Right now, it's run until December. I don't see why there couldn't be enough wiggle room to pay for that, either the SRO or another police detail to be there. We have to remember that anything can happen, no matter how safe our town is. We can't be complacent in this. We have to be prepared for the worst and be proactive, not reactive. We must remember that everything's okay until it's not. The CFCE who is running this class is including eight communities. Those eight communities reach roughly 75,000 people, based solely on population, not including what social media reaches. Please consider these numbers when we think safety. Our children are our number-one priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And as I said to the board members, in your correspondence is a letter regarding that program. So you can let me know if there's future discussion wanted. So we're gonna go on to our, it's item number two, but it will be our first agenda item, the review of the Quick Auto Class II Auto License. A lot of words of auto in there. Is that right? Yes? Okay. That's correct. And I believe I kind of, I sort of asked to bring this forward just for discussion purposes, just because it seems like there's been a little bit of back and forth. I've seen some emails back and forth between town administrator and the business. And I've also, we also reviewed the parking plan, and we know that we increased it from six to, we added like 20 spots or so, 20? 20 spots, something like that. But then when I was reviewing some of the letters back and forth, there's mention of six other tow trucks. And I guess I'm kind of confused about, my understanding at the time we approved the whole thing was that the parking was for automobiles that were going to be for sale. And I understand they might need one tow truck to bring autos over there, but I wasn't aware of six autos. And it is a, it is a grandfathered business in a residential neighborhood. So I just wanted to see if there was any concern among the board members, if you've read some of the correspondence that's gone back and forth.
I have read the correspondence. I haven't, I've been over there often. And compared to what the property used to look like before they purchased it, it's a huge improvement. It is very crowded. But they're not parking the tow trucks or flatbeds on the sidewalk like the previous owner had been. And I, other than that, I mean, I really don't have many concerns with how the property looks in that particular corner. Because I do think it is a large improvement to what it was prior to them purchasing it. And I remember when we did discuss it, they, they wanted the, they planned on cleaning up the back so they could put the cars that were heavily damaged in the back, when they did have those claims.
I guess I thought they meant, said they were getting out of the towing of collisions completely and moving more into new car sales. And I thought that was what drove the need for the additional parking. Because we kind of overrode our own building inspector on that because I thought, you know, they want to sell cars.
I remember the conversation a little bit different. I remember us discussing it in terms of they would, having more cars to sell would, would allow them not to be as heavily invested in the towing and repair business.
Okay. I recall it as not being in the towing number. Small repairs, yes, but not the towing business at all. Then, that was my recollection. And I thought that was in the letter that we sent to them, approving the additional spots. Anybody else?
I don't have anything.
What's that?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
No, the only other concern I had just driving by was that there was a second business up there, and I just didn't know if that was gonna affect everything right here. I haven't been by lately, so I don't.
Right.
You know, there's, according to the front of the building, I just.
Right.
That's what it looks like, but.
I know, and I know that there have been some complaints, but right now, I think it's kind of settled down. Is that right? Are we, have we gotten any further complaints, or is everything settled down? Settled down? Okay. So we can wait until it's time for renewal and then look it over and see how it's worked out.
And I do think, if I'm not mistaken, that the complaints that we did receive was the acquisition of the property behind the unit that they try, were trying to expand their business into, which is not allowed.
Right.
And I believe that those were the majority of the complaints. That sentence has been squashed.
Yes, but did you see the response from the owner to our town administrator, somewhat exasperated about six tow trucks? And that, that confused me because I thought, I don't think we were providing any of this parking spaces with the idea that it was going to house six tow trucks. I'm pretty sure we were clear on that.
Yeah, I haven't seen.
You haven't read?
Six tow trucks over there.
No, I'm talking about in the letter. Well, we can, I mean, again, I just thought to bring it up for discussion, and, you know, when it comes time for renewal, I think we should definitely take a good look at over what we're renewing and why. Because the tone of the letter was a little bit irritated with the town and, in particular, over six tow trucks that I just really had no idea what, why that would be happening. Right? So when something doesn't make sense to me, I ask a question about it. Try to find out what's going on. But we can move on. It was just a discussion item. Yes?
Just a question on that. It's being leased to a company to do minor motor vehicle work.
Okay.
And, and I'm not sure whether that company has to be licensed in order to do the work up there. They're, they're doing it under a company. An offhand, I don't see it. It says here, the body shop, they done minor work for Hertz, but are they, are they properly licensed? And I, reading over these, these emails back and forth, I don't see anything that mentions the fact that are they, are they licensed to, to do minor motor vehicle work? The garage that was there before had, but now this is a separate, different company. Do they have to come before, before the planning board or the Board of Selectmen to get licensed to, for a, to do bodywork? And I don't have the answer.
I don't either have an answer. Did, did you want to be recognized?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, you please come up to the microphone. Thank you so much.
My name is Gino, by the way. Nice to meet you guys.
Nice to meet you.
I'm here to behave a Luciano Quintanilla for the Quick Auto. As I know, your concern was the most of the towing trucks. There were like six towing trucks?
Well, I was confused by the email that mentioned them. I've never seen six towing trucks.
Oh, I thought.
No, no, no. It was, we had some back and forth between our town administrator and the owner, and I was just confused by what the argument was about. Because I, I thought that it was, the new spaces were for selling cars.
Okay.
Yeah, because I know we've crowded, we've kind of crowded the area, but this, the parking plan seemed to look like it would work. You know?
Yeah, but they have like six tow truck in there. They're not gonna fit that many cars. So that, that's what he was saying. Like, there is one tow truck only in there right now, just for the, not for the towing, let's say, like for business, but just for towing car for the, 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 like, let's say, for the body shop and all this.
Okay.
It's gonna be just to one truck on that, on that place.
Yes.
I, I think I see where the confusion was.
Yes.
Because they mentioned that there was six cars that they have, that they have registered with the town that they pay excise tax on.
Well, six towing trucks.
It doesn't say towing trucks. It just says Groveland for six of them.
Oh.
They X, X, I think that's where the confusion is. Because they were talking about tow trucks, but it's not six tow trucks. It's just six vehicles.
Six got license, right?
Okay. I just, to me, the, the email seemed to be irritated with the town for some reason, and I was trying to find out what the problem is.
Okay.
Yes.
I just tried to make sure, if I could help, like, to clear that up a little bit.
Right, so.
That's what I'm saying to me.
So you are the, you're not the.
No, actually, I came like to help him on the language.
Okay, thank you.
Which, you know, English is not our first language, but I can probably handle it a little bit better than him.
Right.
He speaks English, but, you know, kind of a little bit worth of mine.
So, but the, the parking plan that was laid out on the paper?
Yeah.
Is working? It's okay?
It's okay, yeah. He got it in there.
Okay, and so the parking plan is fine?
It's fine, yeah.
Okay. Because I wasn't sure why the other cars were at issue. That's confusing to me.
Confusing, yeah.
It's, it said the town was possibly harassing the business, and I couldn't understand why.
Understand why, yeah.
Why you would think that.
He cleared that up a little bit, yeah. Now, right now, he got like six space, a license, like a spot for car license.
Yes.
He just want to increase that to make a better business and better. He would just showing me like the sidewalk that he shovel it with his bobcat. He just tried to make it clean, you know, look better, as he was saying, like way better than they used to.
It does look better.
Yeah.
It's cleaner, yes. No, we've all noted that, that's for sure. I just wanted to make sure that our understanding of the additional parking request?
Yeah.
Was for cars to sell?
Exactly.
Okay, and not tow trucks?
No.
Okay. That, that was my concern, is there seemed to be?
Yeah.
Some miscommunication.
That's why we are here, like, to clear that up and no, no confusion.
Okay.
Make sure you understand what's going on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good, thank you so much.
No problem.
Appreciate that. Okay. And we'll move on. Unless, is everybody set? Yep, yep. Okay, so we have a request for a one-day liquor license for Crystal? Is it Crystal? The E is missing. Yes, Crystal. Crystal, I was gonna say Christ, no, but that's not it. Crystal? Mark Newsom of North Andover for a private event on November 16th, 2024, from 2:00 PM to 8:00 PM at VZ Memorial Park. And if you've had time to review the application, we would make the motion to approve if you think it's in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for Christie Newsom of North Andover for a private event on November 16th, 2024, from 2:00 to 8:00 PM at V C Memorial Park.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
No, everything looks good.
There be none. I'll call for the vote. All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Number four, well, our third item, but number four on the agenda, is a new liquor license application supplemental information. This is for the TCAT Corona for ABBC reconsideration. It says, new information has been submitted in response to the ABBC's request for the TCAT Corona Liquor License Application. The Select Board, as the licensing authority, must review the supplemental information and sign the reconsideration for submission to the ABBC. So we previously approved the liquor license for the restaurant that wanted to open downtown. I know they're not open yet, and they still have other things to get, but there is some supplemental information in the packet. And if you've had time to review it, is there any, anything from the town administrator's point of view that we should be concerned about?
No, it looks like they provided the additional information as requested.
Okay.
I, I did have one thing. For one of the people listed, the date of birth says December 6, 2024.
What?
It's page two of application for a new license. The fourth person down kind of stuck out.
We can send it back to the applicant and let them know that it needs to be updated.
Okay. That was the only thing I saw that was questionable.
Mm-hmm.
And then the only question I had is when they denied the application. And then the only question I had is when they, uh, denied the application, did they want only three months of their bank statements or was it six?
Um, I believe it's three, but we can double check that as well.
Is there any other comments? As long as we're sending it back, everyone take another good look at it. I mean, not that we'll know phone numbers or anything like that or bank statements, but. Anything further? Okay, so we're going to make a motion to table. Um, and wait for the correction.
Make a motion to table it.
I'll second. Okay, all in favor of tabling?
Yep.
Okay, it's tabled, it's unanimous. And so we're moving on to the parcels of land, I believe. Am I right about that?
And I'm sorry, it is three months. So it's a funding in the form of three consecutive months. So that is applicable. So it's just the error that was on with the birth date that will get corrected.
Okay, so the parcels, um, are 07-072-J and 07-072-K. Lots AD and Lot 1B on the plan of the land of Groveland. The town meeting on April 29th, 2024 voted on Article 8 to authorize the board of selectmen to accept the deed for these parcels, 07-072-J and 07-072-K, which correspond to Lot A, 8D and Lot 1B on the referenced plan. So we need a motion to accept the deed. Do we need two separate motions then?
Just want to, um, to accept the, the deed.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the, uh, deed for parcels 07-072-J and 07-072-K, Lot 8D and Lot 1B on the plan of land in Groveland, Mass. Do I have to say the whole thing? Showing A and R subdivision at Fairway Drive.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Any further comment?
No.
This has already been voted on by town meeting.
Yes.
Reviewed by town attorney, I would assume. Yes?
Pretty straightforward.
Okay. So call for the vote. All in favor?
Yep.
Okay, and I want to just make sure that, um, Rebecca needs us to sign a bunch of stuff to make this official. So don't run off at the end, but I think we're up to the agenda item that I will be recusing myself from. Am I correct? Okay, so the next item, review of proposed letter by West Newbury to the select board, to state delegation regarding Whittier Technical School. And as I stated before, I'm going to recuse myself as an employee of Whittier Regional High School. Let me know when you're done.
Yes, where will you be?
I will be in Rebecca's office pulling around.
So has everybody had an opportunity to, uh, read this?
Yes.
Yes. Um, I do believe there's another important piece of information because I believe Mayor Reardon and Mayor Barrett have, uh, come to an agreement.
Um, I believe that we're looking to get an agreement underway with all of the 11 member communities that we're all willing to work together to come to a solution for, um.
Was it something they had for good faith?
Yes, but they specifically were the ones who originated the idea of coming together with the memorandum of understanding.
Okay.
So then is this still necessary, this letter?
I think I might be a little premature myself.
Right.
I mean, we're, we're still in a lot of, uh, discussions and, and we're working. And I think this might cause a little bit more.
Turbent.
Angst.
Yes, more angst between all the parties. Um, and there's a lot of other options, um, especially when it comes to the capital distribution among towns. Um, some of which we discussed a little bit at the last Whittier Agreement Meeting, which would bring back the assessment, basically the formula that they use to calculate out the enrollment, which is paid. Which is how, uh, the Whittier Agreement is, well, not the agreement, but the enrollment is paid for now. And, uh, it's another possibility which may not, um, negatively impact Haverhill as much. And as well as, uh, keeping things more standardized. So, um, in terms of the letter itself, I think it's well worth it. I just don't think it's a, a good time to, to move forward with it. At least not signing our names on, at least not signing my name onto it. Ed, do you have any opinion on it?
Um, no, um, there are, there are some of the, that, that I, I do like about is the process to appoint members to the committee. Uh, that, that, that seems, uh, you know, remove it from the school committee and put it with the elected city council or, uh, uh, the select, select board. Uh, that makes sense. So with that, I agree. Now the other stuff, pretty close.
Yeah, I think, I think a lot of the towns are in agreement of that. Myself, I'm not. Um, I think the school committees are elected to handle the school affairs and, and, uh, Whittier is a school affair and the school committee should, uh, if it's going to be appointed, should be the ones to appoint them. But then again, that's just my opinion. And I am very much, I think, in the minority in that opinion because, uh, the, the finances that are involved. Um, I do think that the school committee is there to think about things without necessarily worrying about the financial in impact, more focused on what the impact is on the students. Um, and then it's up to, uh, everybody else involved to sort of negotiate a happy medium between the two. But, uh, that's just my opinion. So with that, I think we'll just go ahead and, uh, leave this live for now. And, uh, we'll bring Kathy back in and turn it back over to her.
Okay.
You all right there?
I get this all.
So in many ways that could be said. I won't start with that. Okay, so we'll resume our agenda. I think we're probably at, um, oh, we're at the projects thing. So this was the list that was previously on our agenda, but if you had a printout of it, it was, um, difficult to read. So the request was made to, is that where we are? Project list?
Yes, uh, review.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Evaluation.
Oh, I'm so, my apologies. The town, the town administration evaluation proceeds this project list. I knew that. I just lost my place. That's all right. Okay, so, um, I just wanted to kind of explain the process for people that may be wondering, um, what is this all about? Um, at the beginning of the year, we, um, met with the town administrator. This is our second time going through the evaluation process um, with our town administrator. And we asked the town administrator to set some goals. We discussed them. The board voted them. Um, and then those goals, some of them, this is, is this my son or is you good? It's not me. My phone always goes off during a meeting when I turn it off. But, um, so, um, some of the, the pro, the goals that were set um, could be multi-year. They're maybe not all done this one year, but these are all endeavors that we all agreed to. And then in addition to that, in addition to the goals and, um, evidence that we were presented with on how the goals have progressed, we were also given a reflection from the town administrator, um, where she kind of added her own thoughts to how things were going and uh, how things had gone this past year. And so each member was given all of this information. Um, and I, I know this is new to us. This is only our second time doing it. And so I did notice that the form still says select board on it. I mean, selectman board or a selectman, not select board. So we have to change that. It's, I think the form is easy to use, but it doesn't mean that we can't at some points revise it a little bit if we feel like it's not easy to use. Myself personally, I like to, um, look through the, the goals. I like to look through the reflection. I like to look for evidence and then do each section that way. And try and stay within the year that we're in, you know, to do this properly. And then Jason, I think we'll hand over to him right now because he summarized everybody's evaluation. Yes, and.
Yeah, it was, uh, very interesting. I, I did learn a little bit by putting this all together in a summary. And one of the things is, uh, I think we need to focus more on just three goals and move those forward from one year to the next year to actually evaluate on those specific goals. Um, because that's the one sheet that was left blank by everybody.
Oh, I think that was an oversight then.
Yes.
Oh.
Could be.
My apologies.
That's something I think we'll, we'll go ahead and focus on, uh, maybe next year.
We learn by doing.
Yes, absolutely. Um, overall, the, uh, the overall review was, was rather nice. I mean, the accumulative score was 4.23, which I think is extremely respectable. Um, and I think there was a lot of, um, good constructive and complimentary comments that went along with it. That I think Rebecca will be able to go through and, uh, work towards making things better for the town.
Right, and the rating of 4. what, 2?
4.23.
That's a rating of.
Average of everything.
And that's, that's a rating of excellent.
Yes.
And on the scale.
It's, it's above excellent.
It's above excellent. So, um, I think well deserved. I know myself on a, on a, I missed the goals thing. I don't know how, but I was so wrapped up in the other parts of it maybe. But, um, I just would share that what I made a personal comment that I just, as a person who had supported expanding the board to five and then hiring the town administrator, because when we originally had the, um, the GAAC Committee, I think it was Government Advisory, we went back and forth between whether we, the town then had a three-member board, a select board. Should we just go to a town manager with a three-member board? And we were very pretty evenly split on that. I mean, divided down the middle at most times. And I really felt strongly that bringing in five community members and then bringing in administration for the town, um, was the way to go because I felt that five of us sitting here would better represent all the differing points of view. And I thought that was important that whoever is the town administrator would hear different kinds of points of view. You know, some are easy to hear, some are hard to hear, um, some are critical and some are complimentary. And it's, I think it's a, a good thing to have this blend of five, um, with the town administrator and I, on a personal note, I thought, okay, we'll get this new position in and then we'll start seeing how it works and it'll probably take us, you know, a couple of iterations and maybe a replacement till we get it to fit right. But we hit the ground running with this town administrator and, uh, yeah, there's no need for any changes. We're, we're doing quite well under it and, and that to me was a really great, big, awesome surprise. Because typically when we've created new positions in the town, if you've been around about as long as I have been, you find the first time we fill them, it works, but not quite as well. That person moves on and we get another one in and we adjust the position and it works better. But this has worked really well, I think, in large part because I think our town administrator, um, puts a lot of effort into trying to collaborate and talk to everybody and anybody. And, and that's not an easy task. So, um, that was my big finding, if you want to say that, just thinking back over the years, how long it's taken us to get to this point. Anybody else want to say anything? Go ahead.
No.
Speak now.
I mean, I live across the street and I see her office lights on till eight o'clock some nights and I'm very thankful for all your hard work. I mean, I wouldn't want to be here that long. It's just, so, thank you.
Yes, I think, um, I'll say one last thing, then I'll shut up. What's very clear to me in, in getting to know Rebecca through these first contract, second contract, is that she's really passionate about this job and about doing it well and about what else it could be and what else we could do. And when many of us get kind of like to the point where like, yeah, we tried that, didn't work. She's just, no, 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 we can, we could do something different. We could try this and we, we need that passion because there's been many things like valley screw and things that we've butted our head up against for years and, and just, it's exasperating. It's very refreshing to have somebody that, you know, shakes it off and says, okay, okay, let's take a different look. Let's try this. Let's try that. I like that. So.
Yeah.
Passion is important.
Yeah, one thing that stands, I'm, I'm fairly new, but you've made it very easy for me and I appreciate it. And you can't teach someone to care, right? You can do the da, do the tasks, you know, what you have to do as a town administrator, but to actually care about what you do is huge. So thank you. I appreciate it. I know I don't want to make you blush, but you, you do a really good job. So thank you.
Great, okay. Now we've publicly embarrassed our town administrator enough for one evening. We can move on to the project list. And again, um, that was on the private previous, but it's such an extensive list. How would the board like to approach this list? It's, it's a lot of pages. Um, do you want to go through it page by page or what's your pleasure? I could, we could do it either which way. Do you want Rebecca to just walk us through it?
No.
Oh, where did?
Ed, Ed left and he's the one that needed it blown up.
Okay, so I could wait a minute.
I mean, I looked on, on my cell phone. It wasn't easy, but I did it.
Okay, he's coming back, all right?
So, I hope so.
So, I mean, the, the intent of the project list was really to give the board more, um, uh, of a deeper look into what's happening here at Town Hall. Because I know a lot of times, you know, a board member will say, well, are we working on this? Or I saw so-and-so was working on this in West Newbury or Merrimack. What are we doing? Um, you know, maybe we should bring somebody in because I don't know what they're working on. Um, and just kind of give a little bit more transparency to the work that goes on at Town Hall, um, throughout the day. So the project list kind of is more high level. It doesn't get into the nitty gritty, but it does provide you some insight into some of the initiatives that some of the departments are working on. Uh, just about every department had submitted at least one task to add to the project list. So my thought process was to update this, um, and provide it to the board on a monthly basis. Um, if it's something that the board would like to see more frequently, I can definitely provide that more frequently. Or if there's, you know, um, a, a question that arises and then a board member would like to see the list, obviously it's, it's at your disposal. But something that we update on a regular basis that becomes a tool for the select board to utilize in order to keep themselves informed of what's happening here in Town Hall, what projects we're working on, uh, and where they are in the process. If it's a grant application we're working on or if we're looking for additional proposals or, you know, some CPC projects are. or, you know, some CPC projects are listed on there and things of that nature. Because I know, again, a lot of times I hear the board say, you know, you need to keep us informed. We're not aware. And there's only so much time. I want to monopolize during the town administrator time. So, I wanted to be respectful of that and try and highlight those projects and allow the board to pick and choose as they saw fit and as the discussion went along.
My first thought is that it's just, it's an incredibly comprehensive list. I would not want to get a copy of it every single month because there's just so much to it, right?
Yeah. Takes time for the projects to get pushed and everything.
So, like, in order to keep us up to speed, say, so that we're not stopped by somebody and we don't know something that we perhaps should know, is there a way to get like a, I don't know, like a two-page summary of anything that's changed or something?
We can do that. It's also something that we're using internally as a tool. So, we meet bi-monthly with the department heads and this kind of is going to help guide those conversations as well to keep everybody updated on what other departments are working on and where they stand in the process. You'll see in the assigned to category that some of them actually have multiple people working on those projects.
Right.
It is another opportunity for us to all get together and discuss that. So, we'll have a running list internally that if anything were to change from a substantial standpoint, I can provide that update to the board during the town administrator time. And again, if the board so chooses at any particular point and wants to see this list, you know that it exists and you know that you have access to it. And I can provide that and that will help guide your decision-making in terms of whether or not you want something added to the agenda, or you'd like more research, or you'd like to bring a department in. So, we can also approach it that way if that's what the board would like to do.
So, I'm not sure, you're both on hard copies or a digital copy? Are you on a hard copy too, Jason?
I got both.
Okay. I'm just wondering if we should put it in some kind of a notebook or something so that you're just not spewing out pages all the time. I don't know, you know, just looking at the magnitude of that document. It's fantastic, but I can't see the value of providing this larger document to the board on a monthly basis because we're not going to, we're not going to absorb that, all that. Right now, for the first time seeing it, yeah, we're absorbing. We're reading and we're seeing all these things. So, I'm just, I'm just kind of thinking about what we would want to see on a monthly basis. I mean, some of these maybe don't meet every month, do they? Or do they meet every month, most of these projects?
It depends on the project.
Okay, yeah.
Each individual project.
I figured you'd say that. No, this is fantastic. I just don't want to create a bunch of busy work just to give us, you know, 10 pages of paper every month. That's all that. So, I would want the work on the projects to be the priority. And then updates to us to be.
Well, fortunately, the document exists because they use it as a tool to discuss at their meetings. Which I think is great because it's, not only does it stir the conversation, it allows other departments to see how much other departments are doing and can help coach them to do a little bit more.
Yeah.
So, I think just knowing that it's available, I think it's great. And if I have any questions about any grants or anything, I think it's something that we can request and look at. At a period of time, we don't need to have it every month unless any other board member would like to have monthly updates.
Yeah, and I think as she informs us, the town administrator time on stuff getting accomplished, I think.
We kind of hear it, right?
Yeah, so, I mean, just every couple of months, if you want to give us an update, I mean.
So, I mean, you could get the whole list updated maybe quarterly. Would that be sufficient in addition to the meeting updates from the town administrator? I mean, we hear most, most anything that's critical gets on the agenda.
Yeah, right.
I mean, this is a fantastic document. I just don't, I don't see it going on, I think, quarterly. Updates to this larger document would be okay.
Yeah.
And at that point, then maybe highlight what's changed. You know, then we'd be like, oh, okay. We get that. Because I think every month then, it's just a lot.
Yeah, that'd be too much.
It is definitely an evolving document. And you'll see things completed that will be knocked off and you'll see new things that are added based upon different regulatory changes or different things that pop up or funding opportunities. So, it definitely is not a one-time kind of list, if you will.
No, this is great. I mean, this is, again, the first of its kind, another first of its kind, that the town has never had this kind of coordination. So, and it's great. It's like a trickle-down thing. It will trickle down into the department priorities and everything like that. So, if any member sees something on there that you wonder about or you think something, then you let me know or let Rebecca know. Put it on the agenda. And we can do it that way, too.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Question? No?
I agree with Mark.
Okay, it's great. It's a great document.
I know. I think just updates would be better because it's not a live document. Like you said, if something's added, I don't think you have to send us the whole thing again, right? Just say, hey, I'm adding this. And then if there's any news, just to let us know. But this is such a good base to start with.
Okay. And as far as, what do people in the town see from this list? I mean, this is, do they, is this online or is this?
It's not online. We can make it more available if you'd like. We can put it down into more of the titles of the projects and kind of clean it up a little bit more so there's not as much. So, if somebody does have a question about it, you know, have a contact and reach out.
I was just thinking, yeah, if you could, yeah, put in much smaller details and just say, if you're curious about the culvert, this is your contact person.
We can do like a, almost like a, like a presentation, like a PowerPoint. So, you have public safety, infrastructure, human resources, human services. And we'll do it kind of like that. So, there'll be like one quick page for each of those sections.
Right. And on that, do you have, you are working on safety protocols in this building too, right?
Yes, we are.
Great. I think that's a good idea. Anything else? Otherwise, we'll move on. We have appointments? Yes, okay. So, we're going to move on to the appointments and resignations. We have a request to appoint Christopher J. White of Plastow, New Hampshire as the alternate electrical inspector for the recommendation of the building commissioner effective October 15th, 2024. We have a letter in our pocket recommending him. He's a master electrician.
I make a motion to appoint Christopher J. White of Plastow, New Hampshire as the alternate electrical inspector for the recommendation of the building commissioner effective October 15th, 2024.
I'll second.
Any discussion? There being none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Yep.
It's unanimous. And then we have a request to accept the resignation of Steve Baker from the Recreation Committee effective September 28th, 2024.
I'll make a motion that we accept his resignation. Is a member of the Recreation Committee?
Yes. I need a second on that.
I'll second.
I feel like the air conditioning just turned on, but that's okay. It's lovely. I really like this blast of air. So, yes, I'm going to call for the vote on that and thank Steve for his service on the Recreation Committee. And I believe he still helps us out on some other committees, so that's a good thing. All in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. And then to appoint Jeanette Cataldo of Groveland to the Economic Development Committee effective October 15th. And Jeanette enclosed a letter. I believe she's a business owner in this town, so her interest is in the business.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Jeanette Cataldo to the Economic Development Committee.
I just need a second.
Like she's qualified.
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, and that's from October 15th, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. All in favor? And it's unanimous. And now we're up to the minutes of the September 16th Select Board Meeting. Have we had time to review those? If so, can we make a motion for acceptance?
I didn't see them in my packet. Did you have them?
I didn't get to see them.
I'm going to do it again.
Okay, so we're going to table that?
I feel like you're testing me to see. Am I passing?
It is a test.
If anybody reads.
Right, I do. I actually do review.
I don't have that on either.
Okay, so make a motion. We'll table that. Make a motion to table, please.
Make a motion to table. Second.
All in favor of tabling? Okay, so it'll be on the next meeting. I'm not aware of any older unfinished business. And I'm also not aware of any items not reasonably anticipated at the time of the posting, right? Okay, so.
Perhaps.
Oh, what?
Under the correspondence, the correspondence concerning the PK movement and music hosted by coordinated family and community engagement to be held at the Bagno School, which we got it as correspondence. It probably should have been in, on an agenda item because if you read, if you read it, the response from the, response from the principal, Jim Day, if I can find it here, that he sent to Rebecca, this is a DESE grant-funded PK program. The program is run through the DESE at schools across the state. We posted on our Facebook page so families could be aware of it. If this is something Groveland does not want to support, we can cancel. Well, if this was an agenda item, we could, we could have discussed it. The people, we had two or three people that spoke about it here. But for some reason, it's not an agenda item. So, we can't, we can't vote up or down whether we want to support it or cancel it. And we should have been able to.
Actually, I think that we don't have sufficient information at this time because what do you know about it?
Just what I've read here.
Yeah, and that's not sufficient. We need to know more about why this program is there, what, why is it being advertised, who's attending, who's letting who in? We don't know any of these things. We don't run the school building. Principal Day and Superintendent Bartholomew are in charge of the school district. And we first need to go through them before we start saying what goes on inside of one of the buildings. If there is something that's concerning to us, yes, we have every right to put it on our agenda. But we need to do our due diligence and find out what, if anything, is concerning to us. I definitely heard from the parents. I'm a parent too, so, yeah, children come first, of course. But we do need to get properly informed on this because I've never heard of this type of program before. And before we discuss it, it's not on the agenda, so I don't want to have too much more to say. It's not on the agenda. I don't want us to discuss it and have someone complain that we discussed it without them being notified because that would be an open meeting law violation. And that's a serious offense. So, I definitely could schedule additional meeting if it's that significant, but we don't have enough information at this moment in time. We just don't. Yes?
No, you're absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you.
And what you're saying, you're 100% correct. But if you don't know the information, you get it. We could have asked them to postpone this until we got the information and the questions that we wanted answered, that would have been a proper way to do it. But our hands are tied here. It has to go on because we can't even bring it up to a vote. And we could have, we could have asked to have it tabled.
I think, I think we have to stop the discussion because it's not on our agenda. So, we cannot discuss it. And it does involve a school building that is under the jurisdiction of another administrative team. And so, we need to find out more information and then properly post it. If there's any kind of an emergency, I'll be the first to call an emergency meeting, okay? But in lieu of that, I think we just, we need to stop the discussion. I don't think, we've done everything correct. We've put the information in the packet, so you're informed. I hear your concern and we will go and get more information. Okay? Is everybody satisfied? Okay. So, I'm going to move on to select board time and reports. Anything?
I have nothing.
No?
I'm good.
Was the Speedway well attended? I didn't get to it this year.
I unfortunately was working.
It was really good.
Was it?
Yes. It rained in the morning. I was really concerned. And then the skies opened up, blue skies. The Groveland Historical Society, I know they worked their tails off to get that event together. And it was, it was really nice. It was a beautiful day, yeah.
Good, good, good.
It's a good Groveland event.
It is fun. I've been to a few times. It's a lot of fun. Lots of cars. Okay, anything, Mark, else from you?
No.
No? Jason?
Yeah, I want to thank all the town employees for everything that they do, including the electric department because everybody works very hard within the town. And it really shows when you, when you walk around the town and you look at things that you might go unnoticed. So, I really appreciate that. And I also would like to make sure that I formally request to have the music and movement program on our next agenda.
Okay.
So, we can formally discuss it. And I would also like to request somebody from the school committee as a representative to come and speak on that behalf, what they know about it.
The principal and the superintendent as well, I believe, would be appropriate, yes.
And I definitely want somebody from the school committee as well. Because they are the elected board to handle school affairs.
True.
So, that's somebody that has, they should be aware of this and they should either support it or not. So, I think that's a good source of our information as well as a good outlet for people to reach out and ask these questions.
Becky?
No, nothing.
Okay, I have, I've sent some questions into Rebecca, I know, on the gas valve thing, the pressure relief valve. I'm laughing. I actually watched both videos of both relief valves. Very, very great videos. No. It's an interesting device. And then I researched a little more about it, about what's going on in other towns. And I think, as we all know, that because of the Columbia gas explosions, there's a lot more attention focused on, you know, how safe is gas? How safe is it to be putting gas lines down under every road and doing all that? And so, these pressure relief valves are part of their safety program. And coming before the boards and councils in towns is kind of new to the gas industry from what I've been reading. So, I was a little concerned that they already installed one of these. And I'm trying to understand, is it under the ground or under a street? Or where? It says below grade. So, where exactly is it? Do we know?
Underground. And it's right in front of the triangle at Broad Street where you see those concrete blocks.
Okay.
And they applied for a street opening permit and it was granted for existing utility infrastructure that's there.
Right, but what they installed was something that will release gas at a highly pressurized level in the event of an emergency. So, I kind of look at these with a new eye and think, well, what exactly does that mean? And does, I believe I asked them the question, are there other of these types of installations being done in the towns around us? And they didn't respond to that question, which I would like to know. Are they just planning to use Groveland for the gas relief community? Or are we, are we planning to put these, is there a plan where they're placed at appropriate locations? Because the below-grade location concerns me about how that would play out if something happened there. I mean, is there a fence around it so that people would not be near it? Is there an alarm that's going to go off at it? We don't know. We know the new one that they built, it'd be a big concrete structure and we could ask to have a fence put around it, which I think we should.
I think there's going to be a fence around it.
Well, I think we have to make sure of that. We have to ask. And then it talked about the decibels of the sound. And I'm not a sound expert, so I guess I would have to ask, what is that going to be like for people that are close by? And then my other concern was that location was where we were going to put a parking lot for the walking trail. So, what does that do to the parking lot for the walking trail? So, all of these are just my questions for a future agenda. And as always, I have a lot of them. But I just kept thinking about that day when the, when the gas was blowing up in Andover and all these places you thought this couldn't happen. And it can happen. So, if we're going to have that kind of facility, if we need to have it, I'd want to make sure that that's the place it should be at and that we've secured it well enough that if it releases gas, nobody can be near it or be harmed by that. Because I can imagine that if that happens, it's not like a little puff, right? Yeah, no, right? It's going to be extreme, right? A lot of gas under pressure. So, we do need to look at this again. Do you want it on the next agenda? If we can get, if you have any additional questions, please throw them to Rebecca. I gave you way too many, but that's how I am when I think. I just keep thinking like, well, what about this? And what about that? And I still think maybe we should address the one that was below grade, whether or not we want some kind of a fence or structure around that area, if possible. Because if the gas goes off... Because if the gas goes off, how will somebody know that's not, you're not supposed to go near there or something, right? And will there be an alarm at that site to let people know that there's a problem? And are they set up to notify our police and fire automatically, or are we just dealing with their remote monitoring site? I don't know. I read in another town, and these were all the kinds of questions the council was asking of the gas utility that was putting them in, like these gas relief things all over the place.
Is there anybody we could invite to come in person instead of on the thing to, you know?
Well, I was trying to think of our own inspectors, like would our plumbing inspector be the better person on something like this? Or?
I'm not sure. I can double-check with Sam Joslin, the building commissioner, and see what he would recommend.
Right, because, I mean, that's the kind of, I would want somebody who is experienced to be unbiased and tell us as a town, what is this they're doing, and it's important, I don't want to stand in the way of safety. I just want to make sure that whatever we are putting in, it's safe for our residents, because Broad Street, kids bike and walk there, right? That's not a non-resident area, and they just put it in there. So that's concerning to me that you would just do that.
If I'm not mistaken, I think on the bottom of Broad Street and Seven Star there, that, it's just like a newer, updated version, is what they did. It was the same idea, just older, updated it.
Well, yeah, I'm glad for the update, but I'm also thinking in terms of safety after what we've already seen happen, that these kind of facilities should be secured.
Yeah.
They're dangerous.
The only problem, if you put a fence around that, that's going to make snow removal and maintenance, like, it's going to be a nightmare.
Until maybe that wasn't the best place for it, huh?
Well.
Like I said, they go and they go the convenient way, but...
I mean, you drive by, it's just a pipe sticking out of the ground, that's all you see, so.
Okay, but you under, right, I mean, I have some sense of what's, what would happen if that pipe came into use. It's not just a pipe, this is a really serious thing, if that, it's activated, right? So the other one's going in, Ed, you said, how many-ton building, the other one's going to be in a really heavy, heavy, heavy building. This is just plunked under the ground. So if it's already, I'd like to continue with trying to get some answers as to whether other towns are in line to have relief stations, or is it all going in Groveland? I'm just not sure, and...
So something you might want to know is the max volume released to the atmosphere if there was an emergency event, because that release, I'm sure, is limited to how much it can put out.
Well, once it's activated, it keeps going. I watched the videos twice, okay? It keeps going until the pressure drops, and there's two different devices. The second one looked pretty cool, but, there was two different models. But I seriously watch this stuff, okay? It keeps releasing until the pressure drops. So it doesn't know what's out in the air. I mean, there's no measure on that. It knows perhaps what it's released, but beyond that, there's a remote alarm going off, and unless we get notified, I don't know that we would even know.
Yeah.
So those other towns are telling them they have to be linked into the police and fire if there's any release at all. Okay, well, I'm done. I've had my safety rant. So we do have the minutes from the technical review committee for 102 King Street. If you see anything in that that you think you want us to look at further, we can always put that on our agenda. We are putting on the PK movement and music, and the City of Havre's annual Veterans Day parade invitation is for November 11th, and I think, is it this Wednesday night is Pumpkin Fest? Yes, Pumpkin Fest. Well, tomorrow, oh my God, my week is so short. Tomorrow is halfway through my work week. All right. So tomorrow night, and it starts at 4:30, 5:30? 4:30. 4:30. It's down at the Pines Recreation and goes till 7:30-ish? Eight. I knew it was sort of around that time. It was close. And it's sure to be fun, it's going to have the hay rides, right? The pony rides, wear your costumes, bring your pumpkins.
I think the moon's awfully big, I don't know if it's going to be a full moon, but...
Oh, you're right. It is close to a full moon.
It's getting close, I know that, so.
That would be pretty good. That adds a special.
Ed, what are you going to be for Halloween?
I don't participate.
Oh, come on.
Okay, I think that conversation ended.
I thought he was just going to be one of the guys from the Grumpy Old Men movies.
Our next select board meeting will be on Monday, October 28th, at 6:30 PM. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I do have a couple of updates.
Yeah.
Oh, what? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't do your updates. I'm sorry, I got distracted. Go, please.
No, I promised to be brief.
No, go ahead.
So I just wanted to let the board know from the town hall operations that we continue to work on the capital improvement plan and annual report. The Dog Park signage that the board voted on at their last meeting has been ordered and installed. Board had also instructed me to prepare a request for proposals for the summer program that is currently in process. I'm hoping to have that finalized by your next meeting. Just to give you some background, it is a very tedious process in terms of getting the language that needs to be included in those types of documents, so you need to have your criteria that you're weighing the proposals on, and you also need to cite Massachusetts General Law and things of that nature. So it's a little bit more cumbersome than just, you know, throwing together a scope of services. I wanted to update the board and let you all know that the liquor license was approved by the ABCC for Merrymart, which is over at 931 Salem Street, so they were able to proceed. I had not received any residential concerns, so none were reported during the time from our last meeting. We did grant a field use permit for United Cricket to use 150 Center Street on October 5th, 6th, 12th, and 13th. Their matches are held from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. This is permit number 2025-FP4. I also wanted to alert the board that they will be actually coming before the board to request the development of a second field over at 150 Center Street. Because that's not a field that currently exists, I had instructed them that they would need to put together a proposal, identify parking, and how that would operate in addition to the field that's already in use. So they have started to come up with that information and will be on the next agenda for discussion. For important dates, as the last person, Cashan Ellis, had mentioned, we have Pumpkin Fest from 4:30, 8:00 PM this year. It is down at the Pines, it is not here at town hall. Parking, however, is here at town hall, but all the festivities will be down at the Pines. For grants, I wanted to let the board know that we had been awarded a $20,000 grant for mass development for real estate services and their technical assistance program. This will be for a request for expressions of interest, an REI, for 150 Center Street. So this is actually a phase two of the initial work that we had worked on with the feasibility study for 150 Center. So it really is just an opportunity for us to gather more information from potential developers and those who would be interested in the property and what they would see as feasible and what they would be able to put forward if they were looking to purchase and/or build on the property. From a procurement standpoint, we still have 2025-3, which is the Groveland Recreation Access Improvements bid. That was a bid that we did that included both Shanahan Parking Lot as well as the Pines. The opening is scheduled for tomorrow at 10:00 AM, so hopefully we will have a bid that will coincide with the estimates and the funding that we received, and then we will proceed with a contract award. For the technical review conference, as you stated, we did have a technical review meeting for 102 King Street on October 3rd. The developer was interested in pursuing the original plan that was submitted to the planning board back in 2007, 2008. It was a six-lot subdivision and an access road going towards the back of the property, which also connects Hunter's Haven, which is an agricultural horse farm back and behind King Street. We did receive notice actually that the potential developer had not anticipated such a lengthy process in terms of all the things that they would need to do and have reconsidered moving forward. So the property is back out on the market, so if there is somebody who is interested in developing the parcel again, they will be invited to have a TRC and get a better understanding of the process and what would be required for them to move forward. This does prove to be a beneficial process. I know there's been questions in the past, but this is a prime example of, you know, before somebody purchases a property and they don't know what they're going to do with the property, getting a better understanding from departments, what utilities currently exist, what the potential is, if there were any former plans that were reviewed or submitted, or any other discussions that have been taking place. It's just helpful for them to understand that before moving to the second step. For community preservation projects, as you probably saw today, the tennis pickleball courts have moved forward, so the company is currently prepping the site. The flooring is scheduled to ship on October 22nd. Once the asphalt is in place, the fence crew will come in and install the fencing, and the contractor is actually aiming for completion in November. So we're very excited to see that moving along, and hopefully by the end of the calendar year, it will be all set. For the Perry Park feasibility and design, working with our project manager, Stephanie Bartelt, we have contracted a landscape architecture firm to conduct a topographical survey and also initiate the concept design for Perry Park. Once the draft is ready, we will engage the public and solicit feedback on the conceptual design. For the digitization of historic documents for the town clerk, a contract has been signed with eBiz Docs using the state contract FAC 126. So once we have a better understanding of their timeline, I'll be able to update the board as well. And then, as always, I have a list of the meetings and events for the last two weeks. If there's anything that the board would like me to elaborate on, I'm more than happy to do that.
So do you need to know anything more about any of the other meetings or events that are on the list? Are we good? Any questions about what she's gone over? Nope. As always, it's a busy, busy time. Do you have a slow time? No. No. I didn't think so. Okay, I think with that, we are all set, and we can have a motion to adjourn until our next meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 7:48. Second.
Okay. All in favor? Unanimous? Thanks, everybody.
The meeting.